I'd like to call the special order of the Village of Weston trustees to order. If we could all stand for pledge allegiance to the play. I pledge allegiance to the play of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. If we can do a roll call. Eric.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Emily.
Here.
Harding here.
Here.
Pincel.
Present.
Wyland.
Here.
Okay, all present. Public comments, anybody online? No? Nobody online, one more time, one more time, no public comments. But to introduce Rachel, I think to the board, if you haven't met her yet. If you haven't, if you were gonna do that, I'm sorry, okay, alright. So she started, I think, last one year, two months ago. Two months ago, yeah, so, yeah, very nice addition, so thank you, welcome to here, so. You're gonna see us all smiling tonight, all, we're all nice, so. So I asked her last time I was here, I said, did you make the right decision? And she's, yeah, I made the right decision, she feels bad for people where she used to work. It's all tough, but anyway, no, I didn't say that, I'm just kidding. Alright, minutes from previous meeting, approval of seven thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, special board trustees. Moved to approve by Harding here, second by Ermeling, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, so carried, wow, what was that? Orders, number five, orders twenty-three dash zero one three, and orders to amend chapter seventy taxation and special assistance section seventy-eight point one oh three tax budgets. It's a letter.
This is mostly about the members of tourism commission, there's no other outside else. And I don't see any sort of taxing for this.
Nope. Moved to approve by Harding here. Second by Wyland.
Just question.
Anything, okay, on the question?
I didn't quite understand. They were changing every year so much, and then I think they went back to the beginning of it. What we were trying to accomplish.
Uh, let's see here.
You know what I'm talking about? Yeah. Two thousand seventeen, sixteen, fourteen, whatever, ten, I think, two thousand ten, they had separated, go back to Stockholm, where they were posting four. It doesn't pass because we weren't giving them anyone, we pulled out.
Correct, that's right, yep, we pulled out for a while, yeah, that's fine, yep. Yep, that is, okay.
The only change actually is that we're going to six percent.
Right, yep. Okay, so any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So carries.
New business, board president's appointment to tourism commission. I thought we actually did that last time, but I actually formally have to make that appointment. So I'm gonna make the appointment of Amy Wyland to the tourism commission. And so it'll rule that commission from five to six. So with that, do we have to go down again? Okay, so I'm looking for your approval.
Most of who?
By Cronin.
Second.
Second by Pincel, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, welcome to the board, or to the commission. Seven, discussion and or action on letter of support for reappointment of Craig Morrison to the R M M S B Commission Board, Rim Mountain Metro Sanitary District.
Metropolitan Sewer District.
Or that too, either one, pick, take the safer pick, so, yep. The motion approved by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Cronin, all those, anything on the discussion?
Yes.
Yep.
They all, they all rejected them for the four, for the American Congress. But why he did that, I was there just for what's the.
There was some discussion on that.
I think that was primarily an ex trustee from Corwin.
Correct.
Was pushing pretty hard in that Joel's drop.
Anyway, there was a couple of folks that, yeah, shared. Shared their opinion regarding his past experiences. That's all.
And did not pass, okay, and then Joel not having any say in Corwin anymore. But the only place he could say it was on the county board, right?
Yeah, well, and then actually these.
How'd you go?
Trustees or commissioners, I'm sorry, are going to be on the town board.
Yeah.
So they, Derek Donaldson, the director called last week to explain the situation, there was some background emails, and just explained that they were looking for. Or town board asked for some letters of support from different communities. Now, that's what we.
Do it tonight?
And most of that was the senators.
Yes.
We wanted more information before we made that appointment, so.
Which would you vote?
I didn't have enough information, so I was both in favor of.
Okay. Alright, in favor of denying? No, he, so he denied.
In favor of approving.
Okay.
Because I didn't have enough information, and after, there was quite a bit of discussion about the past experiences, and I've been having requested more information, so.
Do we have any here, have we had any issues? Why, why wouldn't we approve this guy, other than fact that he's been doing it for.
So can I ask who led the charge on the county, was it Joel's drop?
Uh, there were several, but Joel was.
I, on that fact alone, I would approve him. Yep, on Joel's drop, against him, I would approve, just on that alone. If you've been to a Corwin meetings and seen Joel's drop in action, he's not there to work. You'd understand, now, I don't know how he is at county, because there's thirty-six or seven of them, eight. But, but, well, I'll tell you, those wild means that keep an eye on three of them.
You have any issues from both words or administrative side in your history, right? You probably worked with him for twenty years, or online spending that?
No, it's been, uh, eight years itself here. There was a letter that he wrote, a sport on Friday, it was a separate email.
Yep.
So, he was just trying to give them all the background, but.
I am, but this is. I, I know the president of the sport is Bob Stavro, and I have an incredible lot of respect and trust in Bob Stavro. I ran for the first time as a supervisor for this township with Bob, and I. Bob is, has incredible integrity, ethics, and honesty, and if he supports this gentleman, that's all I need to know. And he's been there eight years, except, yeah.
Well, we leave with Cronin, so it sits with Rim Mountain Metro.
Okay.
Another part of the concern too, was just everything that's going on at Corwin, right?
Oh, yeah.
I've known people that got a job there and let this happen.
There's a lot of bigger point than people planning things out.
Oh, yeah, it's just, yes, yep.
It really is.
So any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number eight, discussion and or action on the village web design. Alright, so we did, we've done very well here, just, I'm just gonna let you on that. Because Jim said there's no way in hell that we're gonna be this far in this agenda already. And she said, so she said, there's two things that are gonna happen here, I'm gonna talk too much, I'm gonna go past six thirty, or how much time are we gonna spend on the web design? So we have forty minutes for the web design, right? So I think this is pretty good, I'm shut up right now, I just wanna make a point. It is five thirty, five thirty. Yeah, you're gonna keep him from, they're hungry, angry. Alright, so discussion interaction on the village web design, and then we're moving into call session. Is, and at six thirty, we'll do that, yep, okay. Have at it, everybody, so who we got, Jim, and Jamie, and me, and Rachel, okay?
I can give a little background, I mean, I do, I do the gentleman as well. But, um, Jamie and Jim, I met a couple times, or I guess once, and then just body emails back and forth. About what the draft was for other studies to be laid out. Ultimately, the, what we told City Plus was everyone, the events, which on the left-hand side, it's pretty nice, to itself. And the calendar up in front, so that's what we did, we put that way that's out. And then, based on our wishes, and then, the section down, this was discussed as, there were two sites that we looked at, that were kind of similar, that had these buttons, that were just kind of running the base. Trying to cover a lot of places to get on a site in a small space. Hopefully, a little more room to see that, and also lines.
Will, will there be some formos of order to them? I, I, I'm visually, I learn by visual, I, I don't like reading, and I don't like looking at a whole bunch of script, so I like all the boxes, I love the color, I love the separation. But the first thing that caught me right away was that I didn't feel that there was any order in alphabetized of the boxes. And I know that's maybe not important, but.
No, I, I agree, all these buttons, all the buttons, turning around.
Okay.
In different spaces, they don't have to say they're a baby.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm like that, I like that, but I, I, I was trying to decide, okay, is it the, the, in order of the most touched?
It does not, it's an organizer.
Can you move these names, can you edit this at all?
Yeah, not now, but when, once we take control of this stuff.
And you can make it from a double box, if it was place size to the permanent size, by yourself, or you have to.
Uh, yeah. There's two different sizes, and I think, you know, we, we'd have to stick with the number of, you know, how many big boxes we have versus how many small ones.
But, but you're right, you, the big boxes are kind of there for the randomness of the two.
Right.
Right, okay, not to have all perfect little.
And it's not static, the climate center can go in, and then that can be replaced by a stone, we'll picture, pictures and text, they can all be swapped out.
Or maybe just keep the higher traffic boxes larger.
Right, yeah, yeah. Honestly, sometimes it depends on the picture, like this part of our picture here, that was one of the submissions from our, someone in the village, that was their picture that they submitted. Their project. But so, depending on the picture we have, maybe we have this better picture sheet, or certain things, or maybe it's bigger on the face.
Yeah, crap, I don't make better, strong, or whichever, like, you don't have to. I'll give you this great picture of a duck, and that's gonna be a big one, that no one ever clicks on.
Sure.
Crop your duck, zoom it out.
Maybe, unless it's a chicken, and, and you gotta leave it full size.
Full parts of chickens.
Fully assembled chicken.
Hate to say it, there's similar, there's somewhat of a similar layout to the, the Stanton, the part of the natural resources site. They have lots of boxes, they probably have a contract for that too.
I know those are our colors, kind of like that we use, like Marathon County kind of dovetails off of this, but are those the cool colors? I mean, I don't wanna go pastels, I don't wanna go Easter or that, but I mean, are those? I don't know what hip colors are.
Well, they match the, our logo.
Yeah, I, I know that, but is, is our logo right?
Well, I provided them our, I think, some of those colors, the, the guy that. Wow.
Yeah.
I did tell them we were, you know, that wasn't, but the current site.
Well, I like the burnt orange, I like the olive.
Yeah.
I don't like, I, I didn't like our other colors, you know, the, 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 you know. Yeah, well, then that's, you're younger, so that's good, that's funny.
Can, so, does the Village of Weston have to be that big, you know, shrink down the top left?
Yeah, that's true.
And then there's a whole bar up top connected, shrunk down, so it's like half of that, so there's not all the white space around government departments, because if you scroll all the way up, so what am I assuming, I land on a beach? I wanna see the most that I can see without scrolling, the more I have to scroll, the more effort I have to put into this thing, you're losing customers instantly.
So is that scroll all the way up?
This is scroll all the way.
Those tabs, obviously, you gotta flip those, you've got events on the left, and news on the right. What's, what's that? The, the global tabs at the bottom, you've got events on the right, and news on the left. You see what I'm saying, the dropdowns? Looks like to me.
Well, because these are events, right? Uh, there's news.
No, right, the August, that's calendar, so if you, or it says we all events.
Yeah, that'll take you to calendar, these, these are the next three items on the calendar. Oh. And then on the left here, is our news and events. So I guess just to give you an example compared to our current site, that top, this news and announcements, I'm sorry, that, that's. So this is the, but it would be on the top left.
On the news site, though, it wouldn't populate it, where it says property for sale, and it's got a picture, or property tax, or the tiny little zoomed out public notice.
Yes.
That would be in those boxes, correct? Obviously, you wouldn't be able to read it, but you can click on it and show how it all goes up.
Yes.
I think it's a great start, I think it looks user-friendly, doesn't look busy. I guess, once you click on that tab, I guess that's, you know, the next step, where we put the details on, right?
Yeah, so, you know, I can go into what the, the sub menu, we've gone here, so if you can, once you think we passed on the site, this is how it's gonna work. Currently, what they presented.
Is that how that's gonna stay for your sub menu menus, that they're gonna open up horizontally instead of vertically? Can they stay like that?
Like this?
Yes. I can see it, I, I like that, that I would vertically, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but some of our sub menus on the current site are so long that when you open it, and you click on it, you gotta scroll to, to find what you want, I think that works way better.
Yeah, those directions that we gave, that are current, many of those two are long.
And we should have a limit of how many categories, too, we talked about that.
Yeah.
Well, we found, Rachel and I were looking, we found the city Milwaukee, when you click, when you hover over government, and it brings it down, there's only like.
Much cleaner.
Yeah, there's like five choices.
What was cleaner, Milwaukee or us?
Yeah.
Milwaukee is, okay, alright.
Yeah, we're.
Well, their website, their city.
I know, I know.
So when you, it's a little glass. And you hover over.
Is that also a Civic Plus site?
Yeah.
No, no.
How do you know right away if it's a city of?
It's on the bottom.
Scroll away to the bottom, and you'll see it.
This side department, it's tightly connected.
But I can't see that.
Couldn't, I'm, I'm sure somebody built something like that, didn't they?
They, they can, um. I would have dropped that a lot more, this thing where it's, you know, they. So, you know, they, they build a lot of government websites, so they have a template they want.
Civic Plus?
Yeah.
Have you heard of Revise? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, what was a snarky couple of little.
I, I, I've looked at some of the Revise sites, and I'm like.
You did or didn't?
I did.
Okay.
But Rachel had some experience with company.
Okay.
Better pressing order.
So I, I, I'm gonna be quiet, and just listen to everybody, you guys just keep going. But Village of Plowber, which we compare ourselves to a lot, we beat them, just already. City of Skopje, us, to see them point, we beat them, Marshall, right, right away, they're revised, they kind of beat us, but then when you get into it, no, we beat them hands down. So I'm just gonna keep doing that, I'll give you some updates. Go ahead. Thank you all.
What do you, what do you?
My, my attraction, just my one opinion, my one attraction, that's it, that I like it, that I'm ready to go, and so, so far we're doing really well.
What was the status on the report of problem, bud?
That, that's a.
Click a bullseye, or even go back to the whole page?
There is, there's a box there.
There was a box.
I reported concern box.
Those don't have license.
No, no, like, like, yeah, no, I don't wanna look for it, I want a bullseye, it looks like a bullseye, you can't screw it up, and you click on it, and then it opens.
For what?
Somebody owns.
For anything, we're reporting a problem, I have a water main break, Suzie didn't cut the grass, I, I have a food permit, food truck permit.
Someone has chickens.
Yeah, there's fourteen chickens in my backyard, whatever it is.
Do we, how many, how many, how many reports do we get a week right now, on average?
So let's ask you differently, how often does the telephone ring here that says there's something wrong to the point? Whether I have a pothole in my street, or I have whichever, we had talked, they said it would be very beneficial when you get to the public works side of it, if there's a map, and I can drop a pin, Jim can drop a pin right here on the right side lane, or the northbound lane of Kent Phillips, on the health ward side, right here where this problem is, and I'm gonna tell you there's a pothole here, grab a green pin for a pothole, and drop it right here. And then Mark can grab a green pin and drop it right here for a pothole, and you have thirty-seven people that reported, hey, there's a pothole here? Michael's probably gonna send a guy up, right? But east of the gap, there's a pothole, and there's one guy that drives down it, probably takes less priority than Kent Phillips' role with thirty-seven people that reported just today. Then he can see that, and, and you can track that lifetime, and you can see, hey, we've got fifteen pins that have been dropped here on this day, for tomorrow, fifteen the next day, and, and not just for public works, it could be for anything. It, it could be a sign that's down, it could be a, I mean, how many signs has that to go to, and, I mean, in the village? Thousands? He can't see every single one, every single day. We can all help each other out.
So there's sixteen, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Keith, from January first through now, there's sixteen cases that were reported, and half of them are from the mobile.
How many phone calls a day, or stuff like that? Well, I'm not knocking any of your ideas, so, let's just quantify it, so there's ten phone calls, there's ten phone calls, how many are negative? Just like. If, how many, out of ten phone calls a day, how many are negative, how many are positive, and how many are just for information? Is it two, two, and six, you know, well, just, just, just what your perception is, it doesn't have to be accurate, what's your perception? Well, I don't, well, the negative ones are gonna be bigger.
Um, so, some of them are things that I guess we can't control, so like, like the rock of, I don't do that at home, too many, I, I actually have a board on two people. Mine are like W P S with the light out, I don't know if you were thrilled, like, I can't, Phillips the other day on Friday, that streetlight intersection was out. Um, there was a bunch of calls on that.
So that would fall into your button, and say, hey, you know what, we got a thing on our website, and you got a problem, and you reported there, at least you got it in lifetime here. Just like, oh, well, I, I don't wanna hear a lot of villain.
But that's what you're directing it to, the, yes, the digital form on there, but I know what you mean, and like, click on, how do I report a street light out? You click on it, it takes it to the, yeah.
But I bet you if Michael saw twenty red pins dropped right there, he'd know what to do.
We did address that, I know the U P D was out there, but that's not something that, that's a W P S, and it's not something the village controls, the power grid.
I was, they, they still, still have to put up stop letters.
No, yeah, that's U P D responsible, the light was out there, they gotta put stop signs out.
But a great spot for that would be Weston Resources, right there, it's right, is that where you're thinking?
It's like, right, but.
But contact the village, so you can see it. Like a contact.
But certainly what, like, we're built to is, again, we move all these things around, we could put something very much in gravity, right there, or marks like this, something like this.
But not like contact the village. Um, rather like, like, what Jim said, rather than like.
Report a problem.
Report a problem, contact the village, or that. Because I, I, I just don't like the, the language behind report a problem, there's a problem, that means, maybe I don't have a problem, but I wanna contact the village, or I gotta look for something else. Whereas if it's just contact village, I got a problem, I wanna speak to somebody, I wanna report something, I feel like they're kind of a purpose builder, rather than report a problem. So it's just a language there.
I get what you mean by that, a lot of the times, a lot of people don't know the difference between contacting us, or I guess contacting them.
Well, that's info, that's, we have another, just kind of looking for influence, and it's where the closest they feel, and that we should be the closest contact, that's just info, that's okay. And it could be negative, it's not like you're telling twenty thousand customers, we.
Rather than a problem, so it's not, so it's not negative right away, you know?
You know.
Because if it's a violation, if somebody called us for the violation, we definitely dragged them to the website to report the case on involved, which is why I looked at.
But that's painful, too, if I click on report a concern, instead of report problem, that's a little more morbid. If, if we're at Weston Resources button, where it looked like a bullseye with a dart stuck in it, and it was bright red. It's a report of concern, and I clicked on there, and it opened another window, and then they'll have a public works thing, and they can give some examples, you know, a water main break, or a culvert collapse, or whichever, or a, a, you know, zoning ordinance thing, or, you know, my neighbor's putting up a shed, and the walls are falling on it, whatever, or a.
Yeah, she definitely did a, like, a walkthrough on it, like, if the power's out.
And I understand what you're saying, Joe, I, I do, I understand what you're saying. But I feel like, and this is just how I feel, is like, a lot of the calls that come through, like, I've had calls where people say, and I don't really consider this reporting a problem, like, they'll call them, and they'll say, you know, when are they doing the streets with my street, or can they streets with my street, or, or they'll like inquire about something, and that's not necessarily something that they would go and probably grab, they, they're more referring to jump and call us, or something.
I guess my question is, if they're reporting the problem on the website, is somebody here monitoring that twenty-four?
Yes, planning and development, they look at those cases, and then they inspect them, and then with Aaron on staff now, who's been, I think he's been taking that back on.
Well, I'm just thinking like the water main break.
Who's monitoring on Saturday and Sunday.
Well, a lot of.
I, I think each model is, though, can be dialed in, if there's a water main break, or there's a storm surge, I don't know how, what, what time sensitive, how that is, but can't that be, Nate, can't you have that? Or if somebody clicks on, hey, there's a water main break, or a, a serious, about working problem, that sends an email to Michael or Dan?
Like, where's the issue?
I think they have a, yeah, and they have a special phone number for that. You have a twenty-four hour, you just divide it by your own number for you to.
And for me, when something like that happens, like a water main break, my first thing, like, isn't even to call the village, if it's a weekend, I call Marathon County Sheriff's Department, right? Because they're gonna know where to get hold of, that's just, I, I'm not trying to knock your idea, I just.
I just, yeah, that kind of, you know, so I, I understand, maybe their goal ultimately is to have some capability to report problems. I'm not so sure we're getting off track, I wanna mention this somewhere here, but I think you want the button, we really wanna focus on the layout of the site, and we need a modern, complex case to get to a certain spot, and once you get to that spot, it's what we do with that. I think this, this is an example, it could go to multiple places, depending on what the particular problem is, to figure that out is a whole different, that's probably a whole different level of investigation, I think, of that happens.
So, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm definitely with, with this report of concern, you know, I think it would eliminate a lot of the Facebook bashing.
Sure.
Um, and I have one right here that.
And I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying, we're maybe getting a little deep on a specific detail, rather than the overall layout of the site, which I thought was kind of a issue right from there, so, Mr. Gary, where can you find that point, the following call? According to the.
Twenty-four hours, yeah.
Um, sorry.
So, I was broke.
I'm not trying, I thought this was the actual, I just wanted to see those comments.
Yeah, no.
This was a solid picture.
You should have it somewhere. Where you can.
So this is, this is, those are western.
I think, definitely, we have, we have, we have, we have, we didn't say water main break, and then the public line is trying to say call this number.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, because I'm looking at something, you know, like a water main break, well, you're not just gonna put it up, and hopefully somebody catches, I mean, gets their monitoring, but, but they, and when they're busy doing everything, but they really need, I have instructions as to what number to call.
So, Professor, public works on the materials, after you put on the calendar, public works on materials, you don't want twenty-four seven one to the ten. I don't know what you said, I do have a, I just.
But you know how to get there.
Page, not a whole page.
That should.
You, you keep, put a headline that you've never seen this site before.
Yeah.
You, you give it to your grandson, and say, hey, uh, the stop sign's on here, how do, how do I tell us that?
Right. I'm not saying you shouldn't do that, I'm just.
No, but, but for the entire thing, like, you, you guys are embedded in this site, you know the front side, back side, and can make changes to it.
Well, I'm just saying, if you grab the report, and you wanna, you click on make a report, and then it would go into different categories, water main break, or whatever, because water main being a break is something you wanna handle right now.
Rachel said that can pop up, I think, to take all this number, and like.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But, okay, so the bottom line, though, is you'd like that, you'd like that ability to say, I'm gonna report that, whatever it is, on the front page, on the one page, and then.
It's just control the.
If there's each, same, if there's multiple tiers, all that, you know.
Yeah, we can spend more time on how to get through that, but for right now, yes, there should be some way to report problem, and I see it's down there, but.
Okay, I, I, so I have to bring up one thing, when I first got back on this board, I remember sitting in, at the old building, with Dan Gill and Jared. And they had this great idea, Jared had a click, all it was, was a click, click the problem, take a picture, click it, and send it to us, and then we'll catalog it all then. I almost fell off my chair, because. And then we'll catalog it the whole bit, I almost fell off my chair, because I thought you'd be getting ten to twenty a day, you would never be able to keep up with it, you're almost encouraging. More people to do this, I don't know if there was actually a program, there must have been a program out there, you just take a picture, click it, boom, send it, gone.
And text it.
And, yeah, text it, yep, and so, I mean, if that's out there, maybe that's the faster way, but, but if it's at your house and you have a water break. Show me where it says water break, or the line is broken and water is going all over, I wanna call and get that number, and be done. If, but I wouldn't go there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to a site.
That's, I think the water main break is the, the wrong answer. Yeah, whatever street, right? As you drive all the streets, we don't drive all the streets every day in every lane. Like, I know where that big ice car is, whatever it is, water main is maybe the, the wrong answer, but we should really get that answer, we should pop that.
I don't know if that website, the design folks can do that, but maybe this isn't a bad idea, but. Maybe on the side, you can have a, a, a tab that moves when they scroll up and down, and it just says report a concern. And then when you hover over it, something comes out, and you know, and it's, it's always there, I don't know. Maybe that, something like that, that you can see movement, and it would catch your eye.
I think, I think just to set off, I think overwhelmingly, everyone wants to have it somewhere where you can report a problem, or a concern. Um, I think we can feature a problem link where there's hover and left. Um, I guess, I'm not very good with a big bullseye personally, because I don't know what, to still have everything in the same theme, you know what I mean? I think we can still keep it the same theme, the color, the branding, and still make it prominent. As far as how we do the report concern, there are numerous ways to do it, there's companies called like this, that though, I mean, I get one calls all the time.
Solicitation, you mean solicitation?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, there's companies that specialize in this stuff, that will integrate through our site.
Well, because I, I, I can't help but talk about the target, okay, so you're talking about a target, and the target is to get you to say something negative, right? I mean, to find something, right? Going to almost in every grocery store, maybe not festival, but almost all the rest, including the ones I ran back when. And you walk in, big sign on there, no shirt, no shirt, shoes, no service, I'm telling twenty thousand people. No, 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 before I come in the, the, the store, and, and I want them to spend money, it, probably, once a month, I had a barefoot person. But I've got that thing out going to twenty, so I, I'm, I'm just saying the bullseye is gonna attract, you know, I mean. I'm looking at some really nice sites here, and I love the positive, I like the, you know, like, talking about a great, Michigan has one of the best, pure Michigan. Correct, is that ever me, pure Michigan, that's just so cool, you know, whatever, but. Yeah, you know, and I like the colors, I like this whole look way better than this now. You know, to me, it just, it's friendly to the eyes, and I, I know you want the duck smaller, but I love, I love pictures. Yeah, where is the reporter problem now? I have to scroll down.
But all just doesn't have to stay.
Yeah, but, but can it say, can it, can it, instead of problem, can it, can that report an issue?
But not support concern.
Oh, oh, concern, yeah, okay.
But again, all the languages, maybe.
Okay, I'll report a concern, my pizza's cool.
One of them was. Is that tonight yet? No, okay, I'm just making sure, because we have fifteen minutes.
They don't, so, we got twenty five.
Nate, what is that, what is saying?
All these buttons have small text that's put under it, so report a concern says, report non-offensive across the screen. But again, those are all things we can change the text of, the, you know, the pictures.
Who changes the pictures, you or Civic Plus?
Um, it'll, it'll be us.
So, I mean, you know, we can have a lot of fun with this, so Park and Rec, you could have a, a library of twenty, thirty different pictures.
That's.
And the pride of that, for, for residents to get involved, and you know, it'll start slow, but then it'll get going, you know?
We have twenty pictures that we got to move to the.
But, but I mean, so, but I mean, not even, you know, just to get it on there, so let's say, um, you know, inspection, but, with a big dog at the door. Aquatic Center will be tons of those.
You should have a picture, I don't know, our inspection fan, so you should all be lesson related, where it's a police department, there better be a picture of.
Of our, our squad.
Painted on buildings someday.
Yeah, photo, it's getting close, but like, for, uh, photos of just the fire hydrants, you know, flushing, you know? And, you know, striping, or plowing, you know, a, a, you know, a snowplow, a galore guy. You know, waving out to a neighbor, as they're, you know, filling up the other guy's, uh.
And that sounds beautiful, but you guys have, I guess, like, the more you guys can say it, with the pictures. You don't see every single one of those having a picture, you know, just imagine all of them having pictures, it's gonna look like a gallery.
I like.
So that's something you can think about too.
If, if, well, then we cut it back, then you pull it back.
Gray it though, or have it so that different ones are lit up, like that one right now. When you hover, so, like how Parks and Rec, it's, you just have a piece of the picture on there, when you hover over Parks and Rec, does it change?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I was trying to say, is that, when you hover over, a picture can show someone, we're gonna picture, and when I hover over, don't go back, not. I, I get what you're saying, you don't want it to see a bunch of funny as a pictures, and just looks like.
A gallery, your photo of the.
Right.
Well, some of the ones I look at are, um, the photos are, are moving, you know, not, not just the main one, but I mean, other ones are moving. And you can, you know, just, just randomly, just stopping and starting, yeah. Just to keep your attention, I mean, I think more and more people have less attention, including me.
We also don't want to feel too overwhelming.
I think it's a really good start.
Yeah, and, you know what, that's, that's fantastic, I totally agree, great start.
Would it make sense to put an actual picture of a calendar at the top, right? Well, yeah, that's something I wanted to discuss, um, we like the tiles. I think visually looking, like how it looks, I think the tiles look better than.
That's the tile, you're, you're calling that a tile, then, then the whole month, absolutely, that's better. And then if you want, can I, can I put my thing on there and then make my month go right there?
Yeah.
And then, can I go one, two, thirty one, or whatever?
So, I, I asked them that, I don't think that's what they're asking, I asked them to go on the right, the narrow that cares so, or down. They said, not at the moment, but this, you know, would this company use submit ideas, there's a user group.
So Civic Plus?
Yeah, so we can submit, ask them when to do that, and whether, um, customers also agree when they like that, that is.
So they're trying to not do just one offs, they're trying to do, you, you request that they would like to have twenty more, so that their app can go to twenty more, so. Villages, companies, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, I just tell them that the full calendar is old, and it is, it's old, ugly, this is the way to go. And then give us their, we can all write it.
I mean, yeah. Could you make that a picture of a calendar? That's what I'm saying, is that, I think we should, that could be a calendar. Like, the way you zoomed out, the, and where it shows like an underline how our calendar is impopulated now, or, or populated, it would have. Bold underline, like, hey, there's something going on Monday, and.
So you would hover on August second, and then that would come up for the date.
So, no, where it says view all events, instead of that box, something like that, have that box look like a calendar, look like that, but zoomed way out, and each one of those. Boxes is red, and you can click on it, and it shows like, hey, there's a bunch of stuff going on this month, these are the first three things, gotta highlight it. But then it does, then it's not like Jasper Seven, shouldn't news and events be like, why, why are these the same, why are these? It was kind of confusing, or it's kind of confusing.
How about photos?
Over.
Photos of staff, photos of elected officials. Now, who does?
Sorry.
Uh, who's that photo, cause some have, not all of them, but some do, city has scope of them.
Submit photos?
No, photos of elected officials, maybe not staff. Staff is gonna, would be nice, I'm used to that crap. It'd probably be elected official.
How does it get to that calendar, the word, or was that calendar not right for this, the design workshop? This, this is our current site, I guess, right, and what I was trying to say is, that having, the, this, the calendar, the red calendar. In place of these tiles here. Um, I don't think it'll record this guys. No, in place somewhere it says view all events.
Yeah, when you click on there.
Change that view all events tile to either calendar, you click on the calendar next. So it'll just, you know.
Opens its own page or on that page?
It's gonna be the same exact thing that view all events does, but it's not gonna say view all events, it's gonna be a physical calendar that you put. Right, but a live calendar like we have, so I can see, ju- just like your phone, you can take your phone and zoom way out, and you'll see all the little. Like, things, and it's live, if you've got stuff going on these days, they're underlined, or they're bolded on those days, it's the same thing, where there's. Well, there's only two things going on today, or this month. Well, there's only three things, is there really only two things going on this month, or those are the three highlighted things that aren't a normal board meeting, or a, a. Tourism commission meeting, or a.
Or it's the most recent, yes. Right, so they rotate, yeah, so go by whatever's coming up next.
Are, are those top three? I think.
I didn't realize actually, uh. A new design to their website. Yeah, look at American County, so on the homepage, nobody can just scroll around. It's got meetings and events on the left side, it's kind of funny for more events, you click on that, and you come, come to the calendar that you used to see on there. I, I like their calendar, power side, yeah, so, um, this one, you know, it's like scroll down there, and then on the left. That means an event.
Clicking more events. And both of them, yeah.
No, opens the calendar. So that's the calendar that you used to get to somehow on the website, it's actually, I think it's better on the mobile app than it is on the web app. You see that? So I, I don't know, that's if your vision would be quicker than more events button with ours.
Yeah, I wanted an actual picture of a calendar where the word says more events.
Oh, okay.
Like, of way zoomed out, in, instead of the word January, or August, or July, whatever's being on the top, go, go to our site right now, or the. Any one of those calendars that we got? A German? Sure, it doesn't matter, anyone, yeah, right there, instead of it says July, it can say more events, or it can say whichever. Or you can have a bar right above July, that says more events, or calendar, or something. You can have it, see right now, there's nothing even on. Well, well, it, it got populated, I don't know, sometime between last night and now, because it wasn't on there last time I played. So when we have the mobile version? Um, I just made, uh, or is it better?
Um, Jim, going off of your header part, where you said that you liked on the newer version, uh. That you wanted it like kind of smaller, do you like how this is kind of faded in the background? Or you can still see behind it, but you can still see the government department.
Yeah, yep, yep, for sure.
Faded, or do you like the new version?
I, I have no preference, I kind of like the faded, because it gives you. You can see more, but the idea is to get more, so you don't have to scroll, you can see, we're maximizing what I see here. Right, so anytime I have to scroll, anytime I have to, even if we can kill some of that, that space, like if you all moves. I don't know, if you can configure that differently, or view all events, so you can shift the rest of it up, so I'm not, go to our actual site right now, our live site. And see how embarrassing it is, how far down you have to scroll to see anything, or to see everything, I should say. Your right finger is about to wear out, worn out this scrolling wheel on your mouse. Are you getting to the top yet? No, no, keep on.
Who, who's?
Okay.
That's the home, yeah.
So when I put my application in, I will say that this was my favorite website by far. And I didn't mind the scrolling, because it was, it felt clean, I was not thrown with a million different things to look at at one time. So when I wanted to put in my application, I could easily read it, boom, there's employment.
Was that on your phone or on the desktop?
It was on my phone, and then, well, that's when I saw it, and then I went on to the gear.
At work or?
So. But I don't say that this just feels so clean, that I'm not. I really liked your website, when I put in the review, like a survey, I said I really liked it, I just didn't like, uh. You hovered over government, there was just a big billion things to read and look for.
Yeah, so if you hover over government right now, it's a hot mess.
It's a hot mess.
Yeah.
That's too much to read, so I like the city of Milwaukee that Pam and I had seen, but. I, I just felt like this looks like a homepage to me, Pam and I kind of agree, well, I don't wanna speak her Pam, but. We talked about how if you go to the main page. And if you go there, to me, that doesn't feel like a homepage.
Great, I, I think that everyone should be there, I just don't think it's laid out right.
Cause that's your homepage that you're looking at, that's the first thing that they're gonna see when they type it in.
I think, I can say, getting out is certainly all the results, but the opinions about our website, and opinions about this. They aren't consistent, I mean, they're across the board, some people thought our website was amazing, some people thought it was bad, so, you know. Trying to move forward in the right direction, we can unleash this, and. So no one might not like it, I don't know, so, it's, you know, we do what it says, we use it as an older, so. I, I, I think it's a good compromise, trying to find.
Is there, I, I agree with you, is there a, a meeting of metal, because I agree with you, like, your homepage. It's kind of like a threshold, and you should have, you should have a clear image of what you want the village to look like, or how you want, that's your first impression. So I agree with this, it does feel a little hard, but I agree with Jim as well, when it opens up, this is representing Village of Weston. But here's the highlights.
Yeah.
So maybe these tabs or boxes are off the sides. A little bit, and maybe you're, I don't know what.
What are our notes saying? I thought it was one we were gonna do that, like, so we were gonna shrink that top, so we've got twenty five percent of this screen right now. Twenty percent government departments, that whole bar is twenty percent. That to me is a waste of resource, you've got ninety percent done, or eighty percent, I'm sorry, but the rest of this stuff. Where do I feel I go, I don't know. It's not all gonna fit on one page.
I get it, but you can't, like, scroll down, one, one scrolling wheel, but.
I think there should be, like, an impression.
There, so, like, even if you started to see a little bit, like, oh, there's more here, it's not just the calendar. There, there's not even a tease of like, whatever's below that, all you see is like Jasper Seven. Oh, yeah. I, I think that's kind of. I think we're. Done, they want, you know, like, they, they want, or they kind of broke it up. You know, like, I don't mind scrolling through all that, like.
I do, I don't have.
It's here, is that, is that something that we?
I don't like to guess where it is.
We came up with the website.
I, I think I'm actually taking myself out of this, I only do so much, and I will not do more, I'm, I'm here, I, I expect the webs, I like visual. So I, I'm listening to Rachel, I'm listening to Nate, and Jim, and probably Jamie, and probably you, I'm not second guessing anybody. I'm thinking, you're probably involved, but maybe Sarah, your wife is also, she, I think she's pretty handy with all this stuff. And get ten more butterflies that are on here all the time. Keep us out, keep me out, I'm out, I mean, whatever you guys come up with, right there, I'm done, I'm fine.
Global Claire, that's a great example.
Oh, I didn't check over, shoot.
I don't like it, but I think this is a great.
This could be a big deal here, some of us like it, some don't.
So I think their whole middle is wasted with, with these pictures that are there. But that, see how you can start to see the online payments and city council and the stuff, we could populate our. Calendar events in a different layout, a, a different way, but in the same thing, and now you can actually see, so start to scroll down. I like how they have, you like this, no, scroll down more.
And, and how far do they go?
Right, you're on mobile, so it's totally different.
What, what do you mean?
This is apples and oranges.
It's gonna look.
It's gonna look totally different.
This is the only place people go on, here, this, this, I'm not at my.
We don't have that until September, all we work with is the PC version right now.
But I, but I look at what, I look at.
Fully, yeah, yeah, hundred percent. So, so, so it shows city meetings and community events.
I'm out.
See that, uh, down, down. So they're down, they're gonna keep on, keep on this chart.
Well, that's where it's horrible on, on your.
So. That's like, kind of an idea, I've got meetings, you just scroll down, and you see it says the word sequel calendar. Look, instead of, uh, what are their, what are their things.
It's more so I think like the layouts, and on the colors.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna three layer cake.
I mean, obviously, this is gonna be a thing, you know, we're gonna.
Well.
Great.
Yeah, we, they, they asked for feedback and approval this Friday. We don't have to do it, I mean, they, they know, to keep moving on a schedule, they asked for that, we don't have to provide it yet.
Cardinals that use it.
We can't, I, I don't think we can prove this, and we have your website.
Never, never.
We should put them both at the time.
They don't, they built a mobile version based off of case to get this done, or should. And they proved these, but they don't feel like mobile, they don't change.
No, I understand, they, they gotta build a platform first, and they have to, for your phone.
Yeah.
But they're using the tabs, and they're using the outline that we have to approve, and that's what they go off to start the mobile site.
Correct.
No, I've done some of this before. What do you, what do you guys need from Oshman to report?
Well, um, I guess I'm taking notes as far as, you know, the top menu being smaller, um.
Is it now, do, now, do we want it transparent, or do we want solid? Jim, it sounds like Jim's want, wants a transparency, to see more of whatever.
I want it what?
You want it solid up, up, versus the ring departments, I mean, it has.
I think it looks cleaner, I think when you do it transparent, sometimes those words get lost in whatever.
Totally, whatever you got in the background there.
It blends right in, and we can't see up, I think that looks clean.
I think it does too.
But you could, you could narrow it up, cause there's a lot of wasted white space on it.
Are, are we gonna make, make the locals? Are we gonna even talk about the font, I'm having a problem with the font.
Mark, put whatever font you would love, it's humorous. Instead of the four letter F or D P, that I was talking.
I personally like the buttons, I think that's great, it's easy to find a lot of what you're looking for in a very short window.
You say, I don't know, like the site that we currently have, the buttons or the tab?
No, right here, yes, I love this.
Yep.
Yeah, I like that.
I love that.
Yeah, I mean, I love it.
I like it a lot.
And then we're on, sort of on time, so I just wanted to say we haven't covered the bottom yet.
This is a good start, or we have a dozen of these?
Boy, you. You have to give that to me, it's fine.
Okay.
You have to give them direction privately, before, yes.
Yeah.
Is there, is that a comment down there?
See, we guys love it or not.
What, I don't understand, what's happening here?
So these can change.
These are the mobile graphics, just, um.
Population.
I don't know, I like the.
Oh, there's the population, okay.
It looks like.
That looks like something out of like, um.
Canada.
Why, a fire?
Does that look bad, that's not too bad, that's not too, the red and black, you know?
No.
I like the trees, black and.
Yeah, yeah, but if you blend it up to, to go up a little bit, and that, let Weston be the bottom, now it's starting to make more sense with your buttons.
Looks like arson.
It doesn't give me a mark here at all.
It's, that's something I don't mean, you know, I guess.
Oh, yeah, brighter than.
Not, or blue or water, how about just water, yeah.
Blue and white.
Now, what color is blue for water?
I'm thinking all different colors, I think moving, moving.
Oh, yeah, that would definitely be.
Yeah, I know, I wiped it, I don't, I don't trap it, that'll, ever, never.
Sound like Mike.
Never, she's five minutes, or she has five minutes to throw it over the door, I would, I try on, I'm all.
Gives my ears a little bit of something.
Do you wanna, so that twenty percent, I mean, I think, you know, a, a, ten percent maybe?
What the?
The header, the header?
Yeah. Yep.
This is, um, this is a, a few trustees, and then staff, I think that's where this has to go. And, but I, I, I'm gonna say something, Pam, good job, um, I, I like Rachel's confidence. She jumped in her first meeting, and she has a good sense of confidence, I like that a lot, you've been very quiet, Pam. So I, I don't know, if you're, I don't know if you're on pins and needles for what, but I, I would, and then the comment, you said I don't speak for Pam, I thought that was good, so. Good stuff, good, good job.
Yeah, she wasn't afraid of us.
Nope, no, I, I'm gonna tell you my whole first six months hours, like, you know? Not anymore. Yeah, six point six, ready, ready, we're up, okay, so we're moving, uh, web design, great job, everybody, I just wanna tell you all a great job. All right, so we're gonna move to, uh, we actually will just suspend right now, right, and then we can move in, or how do you want me to do this?
You. Do you wanna move to closed session after we leave?
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Move to closed session now.
But then how do we finish in staff control? Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, okay, so, um. We're gonna move to closed session, uh, per Wisconsin stat, nineteen point eight five per one per C. Consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation. Data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsible with conduct. Interviews, conduct interviews for administrative position. Uh, moved by Ermeling, second, second by Cronin, uh, roll call over.
Ermeling?
Yes.
Sadami?
Yes.
Cronin?
Yes.
Ermeling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
And we are, just, a quick point, are you staying?
No, no.
Then should be even both.
Well, he can voice the one, he can voice the one to close session, that's all, and I don't think Jamie's standing here. Yep, okay, so he is not, and then she's, she's, she's got some, uh, pre, um, meetings, so we have five of us.
I'm sorry, just to, yeah, Jamie's gonna be leaving from Jasper's thing.
No, I know Jasper's leaving too. Tamara, Jamie's leaving on her own, uh, and Jasper has to. So that's what you want, so freedom, not, not free. So we are now in closed session.